... one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Oh, well, forgot to put my jacket on, it was too hot, so we're just gonna have to make good with what we have. Comments from the community, anybody here would like to comment to the school committee? Seeing none, new business? Do we have any new business for tonight? Nothing? Old business? Anybody have any, yep, Dr. Sorensen?
I have one report on the old business. I don't know which item it is, the third top item on the list of all business items, the scholarship, old business item. A week ago, Tuesday, maybe two Tuesdays ago, I had a meeting with Dr. Meestis and Sean Halpern and the principals and assistant principals from both high schools, and we discussed possible improvements on the, on the assignment of scholarships. Now, as you know, the way it's done right now is that, I knew that was gonna happen, is that we have a list of, we have a list of students with their GPA, and a lot, it's a large list of maybe seventy students, we have the highest GPAs, and the way it's done right now is we have all this scholarship money, and the committee does a very, very good job of sort of working the scholarship money into the GPA list, trying to make sure that somebody has a, who has a 4O gets a little bit more money than somebody who has a 35, and it's gone very well. What we're now trying to do is add another variable to that process and move to, sort of bring in some objectivity to that process. And for example, we discussed expected family contribution, EFC, and we were thinking that if somebody has a 35, and that family happens to be very well off, and somebody has a 3O, and their parents are disabled, and the child, and the student has to work full-time, maybe there should be a value for that. And so we're trying to develop a system to work that value in, and we discussed that at the meeting a few weeks ago. And one of the things the committee felt, this ad hoc committee felt was an appropriate move, was to build in, what's, what's your, drop it to me?
Is your mic on? Your mic's on.
Is my mic on?
Nope.
The green light is on?
Okay.
To build in a value for the expected family income, so we're gonna do that by looking at free and reduced lunches. And students who have a good grade point average, but are also on the free and reduced lunch list, that value should be worked into the selection committee. We're also going to look at the application which is being revised, and that application's gonna be screened and hopefully an objective measure given to that application as well. So now, when we have two students that have a 35 or a 34 or 33, not only do we have their GPA, we're going to have their EFC and value on the quality of their application and their essay. Now, this is not written in stone at this point, but this is, as we left that meeting, this is, this is the direction we felt we were going to go.
Nice.
Actually, we're gonna get a presentation later, the way in which they measure the economic need is gonna change, so it won't be free and reduced lunch anymore.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan?
Okay, quick question. Which scholarships are we referring to in terms of the committee? Are these the ones with the private businesses with their scholarships, or is this other scholarships like?
These are, great question. These are all the local scholarships, the Holy Ghost Scholarship, the Booshdis Club Scholarship, the Football Scholarship, all of those scholarships.
Okay. Cause my, my feeling is, I think that's, A, that criteria's a good idea, but if there's a scholarship designed for a certain curriculum, like, you know, a math, or someone who's good at X or good at Y, I don't think that should be taken out of the mix.
They establish that when they set up their awards, so there's the ones that go into the general pool, and then there's ones where they have a specific, like, for example, some of the vocational, technical ones are specific.
Like nursing, or someone who's excellent in math, or something like that?
The, you're absolutely right. For example, there's a scholarship that says you must be a Portuguese descent, and we went to the scholarship meeting this year, and somebody said, how do we know who's a Portuguese descent? So, that particular scholarship, only one or two people could possibly qualify. But, if you take a football scholarship, ten people could qualify for that, and now we have to rate that objectively somehow.
Okay, so then you have the secondary criteria of grades and economic need all mixed in?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Very good, sounds good. Okay, then, anybody have anything else there that they wanted to, for a, reports and proposals from the superintendent? Tonight, we have Mr. Costin filling in because Dr. Meestis is in England with also Mr. Campbell, and do you have anything? Did he leave you any notes or anything he wanted?
He gave me straight instructions, I don't know if he's gonna want to go forward, maybe he wouldn't allow me to do that.
This is your time to change the direction of everything, you have one night.
Happy to report that the Plymouth International Choir, with Dr. Campbell and Dr. Meestis are both there in England, have arrived safely, and I'm antsy to put together a nice little slideshow showing their progress so far, it seems amazing that they've done it all day. Nice to be out, asleep. Can kind of go through these photos.
Come on, it's a stone.
I wonder if they were singing on the bus?
Yeah.
There's a photo a little bit farther on, you notice they all have the same shirts, they were given specific shirts that get tracked over. You can see them on some Tower of London today, or actually it's in Leicester for them. There's the singing on the bus.
That's fun, I've done that, too. Have you done that?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, each one of them's like the size of a city bus.
Uh-huh.
So, should we, the council, probably turn to our accounts, we're gonna follow all their progress next week. Look forward to when you come back, I'm sure there'll be some presentation, some audio.
Be kind of nice. That'd be good.
As you know, it was reported in the newspaper, and I know Dr. Sorensen will probably mention this, that the bid was awarded to Agostini Construction. We had three bidders, and I know we've been talking about a groundbreaking, and the groundbreaking has tentatively been set for the third week in September. I don't have the exact date, but that's what we're shooting for. Also, on your place, on your places tonight, we have the first edition of this year's 2014-15 Plymouth Voyager, which you're the first to have the copies, and these are, will also be sent out electronically. I don't have the date yet, I know Dr. Meestis will be doing that when he comes back from England, but it's, it's really, really a nice publication, and it chronicles a lot of activities in the schools, but there's also a section on last year's Inspiration Awards, which is really, really great articles on the staff and what they're doing to inspire the rest of us.
And the alumni picture.
I was gonna mention that, the alumni picture at the back is a great photo. I wish I was an alumni to be in the photo, but I can't say that. And that's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Very good, thank you. Correspondence, I know we don't, we don't have any, correct? Okay, so let's go right into our program update. We have Karen Backman tonight, that is going to give us an update on the data management program, updates and developments. On very short notice, too, I might add, and I really appreciate that.
It's okay. I'm always well aware of what we're up to. Good evening. Today, we actually have a lot going on, so it's kind of good to throw this in here at this point in the year. We have a few program conversions that we're looking at, one of which is almost done. That's ASOP, which is our Staff Attendance and Subs Program. I'll talk about that. We're gonna start taking a look this year at Moving Baseline Edge, which is our teacher evaluation software program, over to Aspen. And we also just chose a new transportation software to replace Edge Log as well, which I'll talk about. I also want to talk about in terms of new data points and analysis, because the DESC never stops. Every year, I say, I can't possibly think of anything else they could possibly want more from us, and they come up with new things. But I'm going to talk about a new way that they're determining economically disadvantaged, as opposed to the low-income free-reduced lunch that we currently look at, as you were mentioning. I'm also gonna talk about, Aspen has a new feature that's called an at-risk indicator. I'll talk about that a little bit, and how we can use it to our advantage. And then I'm just gonna give a, a quick overview of some of the state reports and federal reports that we continuously send and are responsible for, and all the data points that go into that, and I can answer questions on any of them. Wow, I made this really small.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to look into the glasses thing soon, I think. Okay, so, first program conversion that we're completing, and we're putting into play July 20th, is we've been using ASOP for a couple years, and what that is, is the staff logs in, and they log their attendance, and their attendance reasons, and the supervisor approves it. And then if they need a substitute, that job goes out to the substitutes, the substitutes log in, and they can choose a job from the list of available jobs, and then come into school and, and work that job. We moved all of that functionality into Aspen. Brian Converse did an amazing job the last four months, transitioning all of that and creating a workflow that actually works a lot better than what ASOP was doing. And the nice thing about having it in Aspen, of course, is we have complete control over it and flexibility, so if something doesn't work quite right, we can change that, we can fix it. We talked to the administrators the other day about it, and they had a lot of questions. Well, what if, for example, what if we have, we wanna track if certain staff members are taking certain days off, you know, regularly, and those kind of analysis. And it's very easy for us to do, but not only that, with the substitutes, for example, we can put in validation rules, such as the schools can put in, if they have a bad experience with a particular sub, they can block that sub from their school. Sub doesn't know, they just don't ever see anything available from that school. But then we also put another feature in, that if that happens at three schools, then they're blocked entirely, and then they'll have to call central office and find out why they're not seeing any jobs. So, things like that, tracking after so many, you know, it'll track their accruals. So, that's one thing that ASOP didn't do, when you went in to ask for an absence, you just had to know, I have X number of sick days left, I have X number of personal days left. And it would let you take it even if you didn't have it, and they had to check afterwards and kind of catch up with you on that. The way that we put it into Aspen is it's constantly tallying up your accruals when you go to ask, put in for an absence. And it's, it's keeping track of everything that you've asked for and has been approved to date. So even if you've asked for two weeks in advance from this date, it will factor those approved absences into your accrual, so you know, even if you haven't taken those absences yet, that's all you have left. So that's gonna be a good benefit. We're also going to be tracking, we'll be able to create position records for the substitutes. As they take these jobs, it'll create a position record for them in Aspen, so we can actually look at a substitute's record in Aspen, see where they've been subbing how many days, and that will help us with the insurance piece as well. And, you know, we can, cause we have to pay insurance if they work more than three days out of the week, I believe. And those are, that's another validation rule that we can put into place, and just say, and shut them off after they've already taken X number of jobs. That way, they have to call central and find out. So, obviously, we'll tie into what Munis needs, so we'll create an export, so that what Munis needs to pay the subs, they'll get all that information. Let me see if I didn't. Yeah, I pretty much covered all of that. Any, any questions on that particular conversion?
So we don't, we don't proactively send them an email saying, you know, we've, we've had complaints or concerns, and so you, we wait for them to look for a job and ask the question, how come I'm not seeing anything?
Right, we, we discuss that, and that may be something that we continue to discuss. The way that it's set up right now, there's no notification. It's something that as we go, and that's the nice thing, as we go, as people utilize the system, you know, Linda Primo in HR might decide, you know what, I think we need to give them a little information upfront, because the type of calls that are coming in, it'd probably be better if they knew upfront what was going on.
And they might be able to improve.
Right, well, exactly. I'm pretty sure, right now, all the principals ha, already have discussions with these substitutes anyway, I don't think it's a, no, exactly. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a secret.
Chronic issues.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's a secret.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope, can keep going.
So as I mentioned, we are now going to move forward and take a look at Baseline Edge, which is a teacher evaluation system, which we haven't loved. It's cumbersome, we have a lot of issues with it. But again, just to get it all in one place, and we have to report that data to the state, and the more of that data I can have right in Aspen, because all of my state reporting exports come straight out of Aspen, so right now, I have to pull the information from Baseline Edge, put it into Aspen, to then take it out and go to the state. So, the more we can have in Aspen, the better. But not only that, it makes it a lot easier for the administrators and the teachers to have that information at their fingertips. We will also be able to capture their evaluations and put it in their document side tabs, so administrators can always access their prior evaluations, and they can always access their evaluations, which is something that hasn't been easy to do up to this point. And obviously, we're saving money as we go, because this doesn't cost anything, and Aspen, all the functionality is already there. So every one of these programs that we're able to collapse into Aspen saves us the, the yearly subscription, you know, which, which can be significant for some of these. It isn't the case for Edge Log to Trans Finder, we're not putting that in Aspen. But Edge Log has been a very frustrating and somewhat archaic program to use. It's very cumbersome, first student has had a lot of difficulty using it on their end. There's not a lot of communication or transparency with the program. So we went out and looked at a few, and we found Trans Finder was the best out of all of the programs we looked at, there aren't that many. But the one thing I liked the most about it is the redistricting tools, the boundary tools, and it was just, you know, I'm sure most of you have been in one of our redistricting exercises at some point, right?
Yeah.
I think all of you have been at some point. What it allows you to do is, it really allows you to, you know, kind of play in the sandbox and do a lot of what-if scenarios without, you know, messing up the live database. And it will allow you to say, okay, draw a line around this neighborhood right here, and just with a simple click, I get a list of all of the students who live there, what school, what grade, their parents' email. With a quick click, I can email all of those parents. So if we're talking about, we're gonna move this boundary, and these are the people affected, we can create a quick email list of, these are the people we want to invite to the next meeting, so that they can have, so they can speak, you know, to how that's going to affect them. So I thought those tools were, were really nice. It also provides better communication with the schools and the town. There's a mobile app, so that the schools have real-time information about, you know, what, what bus kids are on, and so on and so forth, for bus accidents, which we're struggling with a little bit right now. And also, there is a mobile app that parents could log on and use eventually, and these are all, these are all modules that we can add. Right now, we only have the bus company using the program, so we will slowly transition schools into using it and the, and the community. That won't be a quick transition. We gotta make sure all the data's in there correct first. But any questions on either of those?
I'll ask you one, cause I think it, if I ask you later, I think it might be disjointed, but the app that you mentioned, that we will ultimately give parents access to, what exactly would they have access to? I mean, they wouldn't be able to actually see a neighborhood and see who's living where and stuff like that.
No, I'm trying, it's not, it's not a whole lot. I think it's just access to, there's child's bus assignments and where their bus stop is, how far away the bus stop is from their house, walking distance and things like that. And say that again, and pick-up-and-drop-off time.
But it won't show real names or anything, it'll just show like, student one, student two, student three.
It'll only be for their own students. It's kind of like Aspen parent portal, you know, it'll only give them access to their own child's information.
Good, okay.
Yeah, yeah, not, not.
You scared me there for a minute.
Here's the entire list of all the kids on your bus. No, or at your stop, no. Yeah, exactly. So, no.
Good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anything else?
I can, the other thing with this software is that we've been using what looks like a, almost like a coloring book.
Oh, right, yeah.
Now, we're actually, we're using Bing and Google. It'll be using, I think it's Bing, is it?
It's Bing.
It's Bing. Where you're able to go down, you're able to see, you're able to get a street view, which is great for us, because without driving out to look at a bus stop, we can look, and we can actually see where in the corner of the property the stop is.
And it also adds the parcel layer, which we don't have right now.
Which is nice, too.
So you can actually see, the, the way Edge Log works right now is it takes a street, and you tell it, this street is numbered from 1 to 200. So if I tell it someone's address is 100, whatever street, it just cuts it right in half, and it just assumes that kid lives halfway down that road, which isn't true. So what this does is it uses the parcel, and then Bing, and you can very accurately locate. And, and so for, when we charge people for buses, and the distance to school and home is that important, we truly can do to the door, and lessen those arguments.
And for the future, the other thing that we have on there is an app that we'll probably take advantage of, is GPS, that we'd be able to track buses.
Which is what Bing is using.
So.
Right, so very, very cool possibilities with that.
Good.
So, very recently, the DESC sent out a memo about a new metric for economic, determining economically disadvantaged students. And I have listed up there, basically, what it is, is a student has to participate in one of those four programs, and they are determined to be economically disadvantaged. So, Supplemental Nutrition, Nutrition Assistance Program, Transitional Assistance for Families with Dependent Children, Department of Children and Families, Foster Care Program, and Mass Health. So if a child is participating in any one of those four, they would have that indicator. They have not, they told us they were gonna transition our October 1 data over, and they still haven't done it yet, so I'm very antsy to see the difference between what we currently see, and I will update you as soon as I have those numbers. But to see the difference between what we have right now, which is based on free and reduced lunch applications, we use direct certification, but we also use, you know, we tell parents, you know, we send those applications home, you know, we solicit that.
Right.
None of this is solicited by us. So that's the difficult part, is now whether or not a student is economically disadvantaged is really out of our hands. We can't go out there and recruit, you know, for lack of a better word. So, my assumption is that number is going to be lower than our free and reduced lunch number. So the question is, what, what does that affect?
May I ask you a question before you move on?
Yes.
I forget, bring that slide back. Let's take SNAP, for example. You're saying, you're telling us that at some point, before that child enters our school system, that family has been approved for SNAP. Is that what you're saying? We're not soliciting that. They're, they're gonna go and apply for that through the Commonwealth, probably.
Yes, yes.
Right. And then, and then, how will, how will they be able to demonstrate that need to us? In other words, will they, will they have a certificate, will they have a, a card?
So what's going to happen here, we actually get that information through something called direct certification. We're actually using this already, and Patrick Van Cott could speak better to this than I can, but he already pulls, there's a database. He already pulls all that information of who is participating in any one of these programs, and they automatically come into our databases, free and reduced lunch. Then we add to that our own free and reduced lunch applications on top of that layer. So we're already receiving that information. In terms of how parent, how families apply to these programs, I don't have that, that background as well as Patrick does.
Some families who do not meet the criteria for these programs, who are in the free and reduced lunch program, strictly based on income and number of dependents in the house. So those would be the people that, the families that we would not, we would not count in the new number.
Right, right.
So does that mean we're gonna drop them, or we're gonna lose those benefits?
This has nothing to do with free and reduced lunches. It has to do with grants and...
Right, so that's what I wanted to clarify here. So as I said, it may lower our low-income percentage as the DESC views it. So, from that perspective, it will affect anything that the DESC controls, or the state controls, cause they're gonna wanna look at that particular metric to determine their grant funding, the foundation budget, reimbursement rates, our, you know, MCAS or PARK accountability system, those types of things. It does not affect anything that is completely a local decision. So like, free and reduced lunch, or who we charge for bus, buses, or what we can do to help families. We will still have the free and reduced lunch applications, we will still have that low-income data point on our end, and then we'll have an additional data point that will be called economically disadvantaged. So anything that is within our control locally, we can choose which data point we want to use to make our decisions.
Okay. Cause we have several points in the handbooks today where we say, the way that we'll decide if you qualify is by using...
Exactly, and that's nothing that we need to change, that, you know, we still can use that, that indicator, as long as we deem necessary.
Okay.
So, I wanted to point out, we're not using it yet, there's a whole lot of setup and a whole lot of discussion that needs to happen before we start utilizing this. But Aspen put in what's called an at-risk indicator. Basically, what it is, is it says, you know, I can go into the system and I can say, I want to create a alternative high school program at-risk indicator. And what I do is I go in and I create the criteria, and I say, I wanna look at eighth graders, I wanna look at eighth graders who have X number of failing grades, I wanna look at eighth graders with that number of failing grades, and this attendance percentage, or above or below this attendance percentage, maybe even throw in conduct records, or whatever other data points I want to include in that. And I say, and then what this does is it looks at all of those, and it will spit back a list of, these are the students who meet that criteria. So it, it can be very powerful, but it's only as powerful as how well you determine the criteria. So like I said, it's a lot of conversation, and it's a lot of very thoughtful planning in terms of what kind of parameters you really wanna put in place to capture just the right students for whatever it is we're looking for. But, you know, alternative high school was my first thought when I saw this in terms of, and Josh Charpentier was all over this the second it showed up.
Yeah.
So, so we're gonna start having conversations about how we can utilize this to help him locate some of those at-risk kids. Any questions about that? Cause we're not really using it. Okay. So I, again, I mention these all the time, but I just wanted to throw it out here in case any of you had some specific questions about any of these state reports, but I did wanna just... But I did want to just mention, just so you know how ridiculous it's gotten. That's the only reason I put this on the slide. You know, we started off with Just Sims, which was a student data, student demographic data. It's 52 elements, and we report approximately 8,000 student records in a particular reporting period, which is three times a year. EPEMS is twice a year, October, and then at the end of the year. There's 61 data elements, so that includes, you know, their licensure and what job they're working and whether or not they're highly qualified. If they're, it's going to be now, if they're a first-year teacher or not. That's a new data point that they're adding. Their evaluation data, it's all those pieces. And this is what connects the teachers with the students in terms of what courses they teach also gets reported. So, it's about 61 data elements for approximately 1,200 staff records that we report. SCS is the Student Course Schedule Report. So, that's what are the courses that the students are taking and what grades did they get? So, we talk about what courses they're taking in the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, we report out their grades. And that connects with the staff members in terms of what courses they teach, so they know who taught who. And so, that's about 80,000 records that get pulled into that report. And SSDR is our Discipline, our Conduct Report. There's about 49 elements. So, on, there's an Incident Report and there's an Action Report. So, what did the students do and what consequences did they get? Right now, this is any suspensions for any student. It used to only be for special education students. Now, it's any suspension, any student. And now, of course, we have that added layer of needing to provide alternative education when these students are suspended for 10 days or more. So, we have to report out what we're doing for that as well. So, I threw the number up there in terms of the number of records we have this year. That obviously fluctuates. So, it's about 2,251 records. If you cut that in half, that's about the number of incidents, because that's an incident record and then a consequence. So, just for fun, I multiplied it all out. And, and there's about, at any given time when I have to report these, that's about 1,639,499 pieces of data that go to the state three times a year. So, it's a lot.
And how do you communicate that to them?
So, it's interesting you asked that, because what was happening right up until this year, right up until March, was I would pull the data from Aspen. I would literally take that file and I would tweak that file, check for errors, because I can throw it up there, it'll, it'll do validation rules and check me where, you know, tell me where I have errors, where things aren't syncing. I fix it in Aspen, and, and I have control of it and I upload that data. And that's how it's always been done. Now, we've moved to CIF for Sims and SCS. And what that is, is the DESE's database is basically attached now and communicates with our Aspen database. So, they talk back and forth every 15 minutes. Not, not back and forth, but they grab the data from Aspen every 15 minutes. And so, the, the upside of that is I can go in to Edwin now, and I can see real-time data of, these are the students I have. What are their MCAS scores? What classes are they taking? You know, all that kind of stuff, really up to date. But the frustration is, and it's getting better, is that that also means that at any given point, because the people who are putting this data into Aspen are human, and sometimes there are errors. And so, in the other system, I could make sure everything was crystal clean before it went to the state. Now, it goes to the state with errors. We get error reports, but at any given point, you know, you're, you're just continuously fixing errors and making sure. It's good, it's, it's good quality control, but it's nothing that we've had to do. It adds a lot of work. It's nothing that we've had to do up to this point, because now we have to be vigilant about checking for errors constantly in our data to make sure that it doesn't get over to the DESE looking poorly. So, eventually, they want to move to CIF on all the other reports as well, which is pretty scary, but, but that's, that's where they're going with that.
So, you never actually, whereas now you have to, so many times a year, actually physically run a report.
Right.
They're building it over time.
They are. And so, basically now, like right now is the end of the year reporting period for Sims. I didn't have to do anything. All I had to do was go in, and right now, I have to make sure all my errors are down to zero. And then, I freeze the data. And then, that's what they take as our snapshot of our data.
Good, good.
So. Yeah, it's, it's a little less work, but it's a little more work in some circumstances, because sometimes Aspen, the way that it pulls from Aspen, it doesn't pull, it's hard to explain. It just doesn't pull it correctly, looking at the membership records. If a student enrolls in the fall, withdraws in December, and then enrolls back again in March, their enrollment status gets a little messed up. And so, it was nice before that I could just override that and say, no, they're active. Now, I kind of have to tweak everything so that it goes over there correctly. So, it's a lot of, few workarounds that have to happen, which are frustrating. But, so, we also have federal reports, Civil Rights Data Collection, and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has a, similar to CRDC, just a little bit smaller scale. Just making sure that we're, we're reporting our staff demographics. The CRDC is crazy. We have to report everything, broken out by male, female, broken out by race, broken out by low-income, broken out by, you know, how many kids are taking algebra that are low-income? How many kids are taking algebra that have a disability? How many ki-, you know, every single course and, and athletics as well. So, that one's pretty massive. And that one, we do manually. There's no, there's no nice poll for that. But I think, I think that's-
That was it?
Yep, that's, that's what I had.
That was an excellent update. Anybody have any additional questions or follow-up? That was very good. I'm, I'm glad you, you were able to do that for us tonight.
Oh, no problem.
Because there's obviously a lot going on.
There is, it's kind of nice to hear everyone's-
And getting it as you're planning it is, makes it better for us to get our minds around it.
Absolutely. I'm happy to do it anytime.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, good night.
Just trying to reset my... So, now, we have fiscal year 16 School Committee meeting dates. And there were two that were requested or suggested to move. And we could open the second document. Oh, you did already. So good. So, anyway, so our retreat is August 1st, and our first meeting in August is August 3rd. So, now, why is, why did we want to move off of those? So, Mr. Costin, maybe you can-
My recollection was that there were a number of people that were not going to be able to attend August 1st. Was that correct?
August 1st, for, for me, the concern I had, August 1st will be okay. But then, after that, it gets very murky quickly, because I don't know how long something is going to last. So, August 1st, it looks like I'll be able to be there on August 1st, because the decision, so, the business that, need that I had takes place early in the morning on August 1st, and I don't need to be anywhere until August 3rd. So, so now, the August... Go ahead, go ahead. Is everybody else okay with the 1st?
Was there a problem administration, with the administration?
There were a few that weren't going to be there. Is that correct, Mrs. Dargy?
That's right.
He'll be, okay. That's what it was, that was the other... I hate to move it to the 26th, because I'm just concerned that... All right. So, either way, for, for me, just speaking for myself here, either way, on the regular meeting, moving the regular meeting, whether it's the 3rd or the 10th, I'm going to be day by day at that point. So, in all likelihood-
I won't be here for either one of those.
You won't be here for either. You'll be in Japan.
Yeah. On the 3rd and the 10th, because we, we come back on the 11th.
You'll be here?
Yeah.
Okay. Gavel is going to go. Moving down the chair. Are you okay, Mr. Morgan, with those?
Yeah, I'm okay with the 1st. I'm okay with the, we're moving the 3rd to the 10th, is that correct? Or considering?
Considering it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine as well.
So, the only reason to move the retreat is because Dr. Miestis wouldn't be available for the 1st. Do we know about Dr. Campbell? So, we could keep it on the 1st and-
My only concern with moving it to September 26th is it looks like we have quite a few meetings in September. It's kind of overloaded.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, obviously, we need to do it, I, we can do it, but I, you know, I would prefer, if we can keep it the 1st, to keep it the 1st.
And what about the 3rd?
I'm open to that change.
3rd works.
I find that probably the 1st and 3rd, or 1st and 10th. I can do 1st and 10th, too. So, I'm like, Mr. Morgan. Sorry?
Are we going to have that? I know it's different, but usually we get, I mean, sometimes we have meetings on top of each other. It's a little hard to-
It would probably be a very light, just like tonight's meeting, where it would be more housekeeping and maybe one presentation. So, do we want to leave it August 1st, August 3rd? Sounds like everyone's schedules are okay with that.
Is it at Center Hill? I thought I read something else that said it was at North, no?
It can be wherever we want it.
Well, no, that's not what I had. I just thought I, in preparation for this meeting, I pulled up something that said Plymouth North.
Yeah, with the retreat, yeah.
So, right now, it's at Center Hill.
Center Hill.
Yep, okay.
Do we know anything about the members who aren't present, if the 1st or the 3rd works for them?
I do not-
Just want to make sure we have a quorum on the 3rd or the 10th.
I do not know. I'm su-, I'm pretty sure Margie was okay, but I do not know about Mrs. Betts. Whether those dates worked or not.
Yeah, I can't remember. Okay, just checking. Can't remember from our conversation with them before.
I'm inclined to keep it the way it is and, and react to it. You want to keep it the way it is, 1st and 3rd?
Sure.
Sure. And then, we'll just react to-
Yeah.
If something comes up. Still a month away. So, we won't take a vote, there's no action there.
We don't have another meeting before then, do we?
Nope.
Okay.
The next one will be that retreat.
I was going to say, all right, just making sure.
Okay. My agenda's moving really slow.
Yep.
Normally, I print it out, but the ink's dried up tonight.
Saving trees.
That's it. Okay, so then, we're into the report section. Do we have any reports and proposals from any of our committee members, Mrs. Hunt?
I just wanted to let you know about something that I did that wasn't necessarily a school committee representation, but I think it's important to mention is, on the 26th, I represented Massachusetts PTA on the Board of Mass Partners, which is all of the educational associations, MTA, AFT, the Superintendent's Association, the Elementary School Principals, all Principals Association. And we met with Senator Warren. We met her in her office here in Boston. It was a very quick meeting, but it was, it was pretty exciting. We actually, we went around the table and everybody got to talk for a few minutes about what's going on. There were a lot of issues about ELL students and accountability and students. Somebody from the Superintendent, the President of the Superintendent's Association was concerned because she's in Chelsea and she has to get kids to proficient that have only been living in the country for less than 18 months. And talked a lot about the standardized testing. I, I and my colleague from PTA talked about having a parent voice whenever these decisions are being made and communicating with parents. So, it was, it was really interesting. I think everybody pretty much, you know, no holds barred. They spit everything out and let her know. And I have to admit, she's pretty cool to, she's very fiery. And when she wants to fight for something, she's going to fight for something. And it sounds like when it comes to education, she's really on, in our, in our corner.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
And during that roundtable, you know, the, I don't know the right acronym, but the Federal Guidelines for School Lunch Programs is being reconsidered. And, you know, the National School Board is taking a position on that and has, and has already, you know, presented a brief. Did that come up during that discussion?
That didn't come up, but both Glenn Kuchar and Jay, Jay? Is he the new president of the Massachusetts School Board Association? I can't remember his name. The young, the young guy. Yeah. He was there, and he talked a lot about, not necessarily school things, but wraparound services and things that's, you know, outside of learning time that we provide for students, it's getting cut. So, that was talked about a lot, but we didn't specifically talk about that. But they did talk about other, like the, the lunch programs that some of the schools provide in the summertime and health services. We talked about community schools a little bit, or community-based health, or school-based health centers, things like that. So, we did talk a lot about that as well. So, it was, it was interesting. And again, it wasn't a, it wasn't a school committee thing. It was, the rest of Mass PTA was at their national conference, so they asked me to fill in for them, and it was pretty, it was pretty fun.
Good, very good. Anybody else? Yep, Mr. Morgan?
While I was attending a, a talent show at West Elementary, I noticed the basketball courts are done, and they look great. If you recall, they presented in front of us to approve, accepting a donation of, I believe it was $20,000 towards the building of new basketball courts. And they looked good. So, I know some local vendors, some businesses donated their labor, and the Mark Wahlberg Foundation donated the money. So, when I was there, I checked it out, and it looks, looks good.
Good. That's two. Dr. Sorenson said in the last meeting that he checked it out, too.
Yeah, okay, I missed the last meeting. I apologize for the duplication.
No, 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 that's, that's good, that we're hearing only good things coming from that. Yes, Ms. Badger?
I just have a couple of things. Like Ms. Hunt, I went to, or was part of an organization that's not with a school, but the PMS Challenge Kids Ride we, we had on that rainy, rainy, rainy Saturday. We had lots of kids show up, and I think they raised about $6,000 or so. So, the kids came out, had a great time, and it was a great event to see that the Plymouth kids all come together for something. And as usual, the Plymouth Public School Alumni Association has our next meeting on July 15th at 6:00. We're really making strides, as you guys can see in this. We've, we have a board, and we, we have people coming to our meetings from all decades and parts of the Plymouth alumni community. So, it's been really nice. And we also have our second fundraiser on August 22nd. It's the inflatable ride, inflatable race. It's going to be fun, Dr. Sorenson, I, I tell you.
Why, you have to sell them?
I'm trying to sell them. Saying. The inflatable run, we get $5 for every person who signs up and uses the PPSAA and their, their promo code when they, when they pay. That's it.
Very good, very good. Yep. Dr. Sorenson, the Building Committee had a off-schedule meeting last Wednesday night. And as you all probably know by now, the General Contractor Bid was awarded.
That bid came in approximately $2 million below the next bidder, and it was awarded to Agastini and Bacon. And as you know, they have built several schools in the Commonwealth. I think-
Whitman Hansen.
Whitman Hansen is one of them, it's a beautiful school. And also, we approved the first three alternates, which would be the waste, the- And also, we approved the first three alternates, which would be the waste, the Aquifer Plant, the halftime facility, and the track and football field.
Oh, we did get the field. Oh, I thought the field was still in limbo.
Approving it doesn't mean we're getting it.
No, I, no, no, I meant, with the size of the bid, and the accepted bid, figuring out what's left over as far as the money, I thought we weren't going to have enough for beyond the water treatment plant.
No, the, when the bid came in, which was a little bit higher than anticipated, they were able to fit in, they, we really have to do alternate 1, for sure, the wastewater treatment plant, and alternate 2 is the halftime facility, which has the restrooms, et cetera, for the football field. The alternate 3, which is the turf field just for the football field and the track, the owner's project manager was able to work with MSBA to adjust our contingency. So, that's essentially what happened, to acquire that alternate. The thing, the alternates that were not accepted were 4 and 5, which are the turf, baseball, softball fields, and the lighting for those fields. So, those fields, you're correct, are not in the bid at this point.
Any other meetings besides that special meeting?
I don't have that scheduled in front of me. We have our regular meeting coming up, I haven't got that scheduled with me.
Okay. That was big enough, though.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. Any, anything else? Then, schedule of bills. Fiscal year '15 Accounts Payable Warrant, first one.
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve their reports and accounts payable warrant S062515, dated June 25th, 2015, in the amount of $1,380,944.15 as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Nonsense. Next one.
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve their reports and accounts payable warrant S15JUL1, dated July 2nd, 2015, in the amount of $342,859.08 as presented.
Do I hear a second? Mrs. Hunt seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, sorry about that. Ms. Hunt? Fiscal year '16 Accounts Payable Warrant.
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve their reports and accounts payable warrant S070215, dated July 2nd, 2015, in the amount of $30,243.50 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I was trying to spread. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Nonsense.
Another question?
Yes.
I have a question, actually.
I want to apologize, apologize to the committee, because I have to met great intentions to get to central office and sign the warrants, and now, we're going into another month without a school committee meeting, and we're going to go through the same thing again. So, here's my question, and I probably know the answer. If we come during the day to sign the warrants, we can get them during the day? Just go to your office?
Correct.
Okay. I'll be much better, I promise. Because we had a problem, didn't we?
We did, yep, we did.
One day, there was a car parked right in front of it.
Yeah, lately, some, the cleaning crew's been parking at night right in front of the box.
I was afraid I was going to scratch their car when I opened the whole thing.
Step around it, it's okay. But, yeah.
Absolutely, come during the day.
It becomes a panic, yeah, because we're looking for the quorum, so, that's good, thank you. Minutes?
Just for the committee, though, if I can, I'm sorry, the next scheduled, since we've kept our meeting the same on August 3rd, I don't anticipate, with the exception of, we will have one warrant dated for the 23rd of July. So, we'll be calling, calling people a week at the 10th.
Week at the 10th.
To sign.
Week of the 10th, that's next week.
Yeah, probably next week.
I'm in the wrong month.
For the 23rd.
So, this weekend?
I'm sorry, no, the week after, I apologize. The week of the 17th, we'll be calling, sending out an email blast or something, whatever, whatever works.
I'll be at it.
Yeah.
Email?
I think what might have happened in the last email, we threw into so many dates, well-intentioned, but I think it rattled everybody, so just, the day that we have to be there to sign, I think is the only day we really need to see.
We'll do that, we'll do that. We think simply.
Yeah, yeah. Because it just seemed like everybody was in the wrong place.
Your Plymouth emails are fine to go to your Plymouth email, so you're checking those, perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes, June 1st, minutes.
On June 1st, I went through, what was the minutes that we held over, because we thought there was a section missing? That was June 1st, we held that over?
This one, yep.
Right. Now, I went through the minutes, looking for the section that was reported to be missing, and I, it felt unclear to me as to whether that was supposed to be in there or not in there.
In the comments, well, Mrs. Dargy, you want to, because in the comments, I saw you gave the answer.
I didn't see the comment.
On the actual agenda.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Following review of the meeting video, in view of Ms. Badger's memory of mentioning the, what's that?
I said I was wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there it is.
The bottom line, she was wrong.
Yep.
You didn't have the right memory, it was just...
Just the wrong bit, that's all.
Okay, great, oh, there it is. I didn't re, I'm sorry, I should have read that paragraph, thank you very much, that's helpful. On June 1st, then, I'll move that we approve the minutes of June 1st as presented.
And we have a second? Ms. Hunt, second it? Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Badger?
I just have one really quick edit. On the top of page 8, second line, it says 50% not is not, just get rid, just need to get rid of not, one not, but, fine.
And I have one, too. Go ahead.
I'm going to, I raised this at the last meeting when we first discussed this. 5.2, which is page 2 of 10, it said, Mr. Begley raised the topic of sporting events conflicting with graduation.
Yeah.
It's Dr. Sorensen raised the topic of sporting events conflicting with graduation. So, strike Mr. Begley and put in Dr. Sorensen.
So, that was what I emailed you about, right there, that part. Good. So, with those corrections, any further discussion? All those in favor? Come on. And June 15th? Yes, Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the June 15th minutes as presented.
Have a motion, we have a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? And do we have an abstention?
One abstention, I was opposed.
Very good. And that was the last item on the agenda for tonight. Unless you guys want to stay longer until, oh, you do?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There's something that I probably should have mentioned during the approval, but I just want to mention it really quickly, is it appropriate? It's just a comment.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, the Senate is going to be debating the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, so, they haven't touched it in 14 years, so it's going to be probably a huge, huge process, but I wanted to make everybody aware that finally, there's going to be some movement on that.
Be glued to C-SPAN.
Yeah, right. Yeah, everybody watch, but it's been 14 years, which I always equate...
Yeah, I think there's substantial changes.
Absolutely, and it might not be everything that we want either, but I always equate the 14 years to one student's entire school career, that nothing's been done.
Right.
So, it needs to do something, so, just my little...
That's good, that was a good one.
My wedgie cat.
Did you want to add to that, Dr. Sorensen? Then, at 7:59, we're adjourned.